The new, obviously, and we'll do the best we can. So before I call the meeting to order, go through a few guidelines that we're going to try and do to keep the moving, the meeting moving along. Consistently, it's basically going to be the same thing as what we've done in the past at all of our, you know, in our in-house meetings. We'll change a few little things. I'll read the subject and then turn it over to Brian and Brian will give a little background data of of the item that's up for discussion. After Brian is completed, I will, I will call out each council member and ask if they have any comments. And then once we're through all of the comments from the, from council members, I'll pass it back to Brian and or actually I'll ask for a motion on, on the item. And then, uh, once we get the first and second, I'll pass it to Brian and then we will do, Brian will do a roll call vote. The, and then we'll proceed to the next item. Then probably the biggest change from what would be normal is normally I would allow public comment, being that this is our first meeting, we're going to do this one tonight with no public comment. It seems like the agenda is pretty straightforward. So we're gonna, we're just gonna hold on to public comment tonight, other than the one of five point five where Randy Kubis is here. If we have any questions for him, we will, we'll address those questions to him. So does anybody have any questions before I call the meeting to order?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
No.
So I will call the meeting to order at seven oh four and let the roll call show that all are present. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, we just have one addition to the agenda. We received a rental license, residential rental license application for three hundred oak. Uh, so we are going to be asking for approval on that with the condition that the utility bill and inspection is completed. And that should be on the consent.
I'll put that down at three, uh, three point eight on the consent agenda. I would also, since we have Mr. Kubis here, I was hoping that after we go through the consent agenda, we will bring item five point five up right after the consent agenda. And once we complete that item, then we'll go into reports and presentations and we will move on in orderly fashion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? As
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Bob for cell first, uh, Dennis Lambrecht second, all those in, oh, now Brian, you'll have to do the roll call. I'm sorry, I forgot already.
Uh, council member McGuire?
Uh, yes.
Council member Lambrecht?
Yes.
Council member Kubis?
Yes.
Council member for cell?
Yes.
Mayor Isard?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll move along to item number three, the consent agenda. I'll go, go through those real quickly. Three point one is approval of minutes, three point two approval of claims and the amount of three hundred eighty-six thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents and prepaid claims and the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-two cents for a total of four hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and three cents. Three point three, approved resolution twenty-seven dash two thousand twenty, authorizing gambling permit for Montgomery Sportsman's Club to conduct lawful charitable gambling at the Happy Hour Bar. The Happy Hour currently hosts the Montgomery Knights of Columbus, chapter six, section six hundred point one seven subdivision sixteen permits up to two organizations per eligible establishment. Three point four, acknowledge appointment of Isaac Shugal to the ambulance secretary to replace Jenny Stephens. Three point five, approved resolution twenty-nine dash two thousand twenty for Montgomery Fire Relief Temporary Liquor License. Three point six, approved Montgomery Fire Department Relief Association Temporary Liquor License Application and Street Closing for June two thousand twenty. And three point seven, spring cleanup, approved recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board to postpone the annual spring cleanup event to the fall. Three point eight, the three hundred Oak Avenue Rental License Pending Inspection. And there was one other item on there, Brian, I can't recall.
Uh, paying of the utility bills.
Paying of the utility bills. Um, do I have a motion to approve the, do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it presented with the
Second.
Council member Kubis first, council member for cell second. Brian, you can go with the roll call.
Uh, council member Lambrecht?
Yes.
Council member Kubis?
Yes.
Council member for cell?
Yes.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Isard?
Yes.
Okay, we, we will move up to five point five, um, the consideration of Randy Kubis preliminary final plat. Brian, if you want to give us a little background on that, we'll get that taken care of before we move to reports and presentations.
All right, um, so Mr. Kubis has some property to the west of town. It's roughly one point nine miles outside of city limits. And because it's within a two mile radius, they have to go through the formal plating process. This item was brought to the planning commission in March, I believe. And, um, not March, yeah, in March. Um, planning commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the plats as a preliminary and a final together at the same time, since it's a fairly simple split. Uh, the condition that they put on it was at the time, the ownership documentation wasn't in the name of Mr. Kubis and his wife, who were requesting the split. And so it was held pending that documentation. Documentation was provided last week and a couple of other items on the plat were squared away this afternoon, I believe, with Mr. Warner Monday. And so the request is to approve it as presented. And then they'll bring in the Mylar documents for signing.
Okay, thank you. Um, council member Lambrecht, do you have any questions? Thank you. Council member Kubis, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Council member for cell, any questions or comments?
No, none.
Council member McGuire, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, not at this point.
Okay. I would be, I will entertain a motion to approve the preliminary final plat. Unless anyone has any question. We'll move, okay.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have the first and a second. Uh, Mr. Heck, would you like to call the roll?
Certainly will. Uh, council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member for cell?
Yes.
Council member Kubis?
Yes.
Council member Lambrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Isard?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for coming, Mr. Kubis. Uh, good luck with everything. Uh, we will move along to number four.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, council members for approval.
We will move on to number four, reports and presentations. Four point one is a two thousand nineteen audit. Um, I believe Lane is here to put on a presentation. Brian, do you have any input prior, or do you just want Lane to, to go right, go right through it?
I'm going to put the presentation up on the screen and turn it over to Lane.
Sure, I can, um, I can also share my screen too, Brian, but let me know what works for you. Um, and we can kind of go
Can everybody, can everybody see the, the presentation?
Yes.
You'll just have to let me know when to hit the, to advance the slide.
Absolutely. Yeah. So thanks for having me, everybody. Um, my name's Lane, it's Abdoua Kim Myers. I recognize some of the faces here. So I've been presenting on this the last, oh, three, four years now, and I've been on the audit pretty much every year since I've worked with Abdo, which is about eight years now. So if anybody has any questions along the way, feel free to chime in. Otherwise, we can kind of get started here. So you go to the next slide, Brian. And kind of what we do is put together this audit presentation and it kind of goes off of what we put together in the audit report. It's, it's kind of a high level summary. We're not going to go through each line, financial statements, one by one. Um, we'll quick kind of go through what our responsibility is as auditors and our audit opinion. We'll look at the general fund, we'll look at other governmental funds, your capital projects, your special revenue funds, and then also where your enterprise funds are. And then some just related ratios that, um, that we deem relevant or important for kind of your city operations. So you can advance, Brian. So kind of what we'll start off with is what our audit opinion is and, um, which is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion for the twenty nineteen audit, which is what you want. We, that is the objective of financial statement audit is to provide an opinion on the financial statement. So we use reasonable assurance. We'll look through various areas throughout the audit that may, that may seem odd or might draw our attention. Uh, we can't look at every single transaction that the city enters into during the year. So we can't offer complete assurance that the financial statements are not true. So that's why we, um, provide reasonable assurance. And your audit really is a moving target. So if we, if we come across something that might stand out, um, we'll dedicate more of our time to that. If something seems like it's on par with our expectations, or we may reduce some, some testing based off of that. So, um, you know, given that, again, we, that's our opinion is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. So ultimately, the, the response, the financial statements are the responsibility of the city council through accepting the audit. Given that, we have three financial statement findings to report on in twenty nineteen. Uh, so the same three findings that you've had in years past, preparation of financial statements, basically, we just says that we have auditors help put together the audit report, um, which is that large PDF that you received. Limited segregation of duties, um, being a smaller office size, you know, there's certain control areas that are just limited, just due to the cost benefit standpoint. In a perfect control environment, you'd have four different people segregated, kind of what the generally accepted auditing standards has, different buckets, reconciliation, recording, authorization, and custody. Given there's some overlap in some of those areas with, with staff, uh, we have that limited segregation duty finding. It's just important to know that as a city council, that you are looking through various reports on a regular basis. Whether it be check registers, bank reconciliations, utility billing information, um, having that additional check in place, um, to go through that. Even if you do, unfortunately, Connie Sanders basically say that even if there is that, um, additional step in place, it's not enough to reduce, um, to get rid of that accounting, that audit binding. But it is another important step to take as, as far as that segregation duties. And the last one is material audit and accounting adjustments that we have, and that's typically normal of another city your size, basically just says that as part of the audit, we put together journal entries that needed to be made to, um, get the financial statements to where they needed to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So all three are very common in a city of, of your size. And typically are there on an annual basis. One other thing to point out, which is kind of an other matter, which doesn't really merit, um, up to the point of a financial statement finding. But is, is still important enough to point out is that, you know, we're going through and trying to tie out the, the budget, which Brian puts together and what gets entered into Banyan. Uh, there's a few different difference, a few differences that were noted, um, between the two. So if you are looking at budget to actual information on a monthly basis, if that isn't entered correctly, you're kind of looking at the wrong reports. Um, so there was a, there was some line items there that, that were off from tying out the budget to what was entered into Banyan and consequently what gets reported to city council. So that was another matter two years ago or three years ago. I think it was remedied the year before and now it's back again this year. So just important to know again, to have that proper procedure in place to make sure that what has been reported does match up to what the authorized budget is. Okay. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we will jump into the general fund. Okay. So what we'll look at here is where your budget expenditures have been at the last six years, which is going to be the red line. So typically you can see where the trend has been, has been increasing, um, due to various reasons. Most of it, you know, is inflationary, but other projects that you may have going on. So the general fund, uh, back in twenty fifteen was about one point eight million budget expenditures to about two point three million in twenty twenty. And what we'd want to see is your general fund balance to typically be anywhere from thirty-five to fifty percent of those budgeted expenditures. So the blue line is what's going to represent that, which we've been right around the forty percent in years past that has, that did increase about forty-three percent in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen is about thirty-seven percent. So again, it's where we would recommend as auditors, maybe a little bit of the low end, uh, but you're still in line, in line with those recommendations. The gray bar, which is something happens, the legend's not right, but, um, that's where your fund balance policy is. So your fund balance policy as a city is to maintain a forty to fifty percent level, less any transfers that are being accounted for in there. Um, so you're a little bit below where we would record, where your fund balance policy would recommend those dollars to be. Okay. Looking at twenty nineteen, just as a snapshot, you can see, um, again, where your budget has been at in that, that left-hand column. So you anticipated about a little under two point five million in revenue compared about two point two in expenditures. And then you also accounted for some dollars being transferred out to various other funds. So that net change in fund balance line, which is the third to last line, is kind of what you would hear as being a budget being balanced. So the budget did call for about a twenty-four thousand dollar increase during the year. And then the middle line, which is the actual amounts, um, total actual fund balance did increase about thirty-three thousand, what eight hundred sixty-six thousand to about nine hundred thousand dollars during the year. Um, so main areas on that, uh, you can see the top line revenues were over budget, which is a good thing. So licenses and permits were about thirty-five thousand dollars over budget. There's a lot of activity going on in twenty nineteen. I know you, I think there's a new school building that was, that was put up. That was a big, big, um, building permit that accounted for in there. Uh, some various state aids, thirty-four thousand dollars in, uh, over budget and police aid. That's very common throughout the state. I think there was a an increase, a bump in the police aid that was unanticipated during twenty nineteen. And then it was a good year for investments. Investment revenues about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars over budget than anticipated in the general fund. Uh, and also fines and forfeits were up too. I know that there was a a conscious effort to be made to collect some additional, um, blights and other violations that were being collected on them. So consequence, consequently, if you look at where expenditures were at, budgeted about two point two million, actually came in about two point three, so about a hundred thousand dollars over budget on expenditures. Again, some of those are going to be offset with related revenues. Um, planning and zoning expenses were up about twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars again, as there's additional building permits going on, there's additional costs involved with, with, um, with that activity. And, um, the same thing with, um, fines and forfeits. Uh, there's additional costs to, to prosecute, bring some attorney costs involved in there as well. And then streets were about thirty-two thousand dollars over budget in total, um, just due to various, various activity. I think there was a, most of it was personnel services. I believe there was another, another employee being hired to handle some of the, the street functions and that, that added to the, the cost as well. Do you have anything to add on that, Brian? If not, we'll keep going.
Oh, I think you covered most of the issues that, that were there.
Sure. So general fund revenues by type, this just kind of gives you a trend over the last three years on where, where your revenues have been at in the general fund. And I can touch a whole lot on that. The main thing you can see here is where your taxes are at and where your governmental is at. So between those two, it typically is right around eighty-eight to eighty-nine percent of your general fund revenues. And you can see the, in your governmental line is pretty flat. The majority of that is made up of LGA and have not been a whole lot of LGA changes over the past few years. There is some legislation out there that's trying to increase that. But for the most part, it's been pretty flat. So the one thing I do like to point out is that as increases in general fund expenditures occur, typically it's going to be a tax levy increase that helps balance that budget. If that's the, the option being, being chosen. Okay. Same thing with expenditures. Um, you can see the biggest areas of where your expenditures are going to be laid out is the public safety. And you can see the increases over the past few years. Again, a lot of it's going to be inflationary in nature. Um, and then the same with public works. So again, as, as budgets expand, um, a lot of times there's, there's more personnel and that's going to be the main driver of where your, your general fund expenditures are at. It's typically going to be in your in your personal services, wages, benefits, that sort of thing. Okay. Capital project fund balances. So we did mention those transfers out of the general fund, uh, earlier and is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you can see that there was about two hundred eighty thousand dollar increase in your, in your capital project fund balances. So what's happening is the general fund is moving some, some excess dollars out and over to these capital project funds to set aside for specific purposes. So you can see where the, where those dollars are at. You have the, your fire truck funds, so dollars are set aside for the fire truck. Your street improvements, there's park improvements, equipment improvements and public safety. There is still that deficit that is out there and that major capital project funds for that project from years past. You know, Brian and I have been in discussions and Tom too, on how to eliminate that. So, um, you know, I, I think there's a, a plan in place to get rid of that, um, going forward and something that will be remedied in twenty twenty. Um, that'll give you a little bit more flexibility. I think it'll really help with your bond rating. That you have a plan in place for, for that deficit. And with any capital project fund balances, my recommendation is to, to again, have a plan and where your costs are going to be at in the next five years, where your outlets need to be, what major projects you have out there, and then how are you going to finance them? It's going to go a long way on, you know, not only for that bond rating agency, but also, um, can really help smooth out your tax levies and, um, help with any unanticipated spikes in levies. Okay. Next slide, I don't have a whole lot to, to, to touch on here outside of, you know, a lot of these dollars are available at your discretion. There's really not a whole lot of fund balance restrictions on these. To say that you have to spend these for specific purposes, being the dollars that are being moved over from the general fund, there really is at council's discretion or or Brian's discretion on, hey, do we need to move some of these back to the general fund? Do we want to spend some of these down? Uh, it, it really gives you some flexibility on, on where these uses are. Okay. So the same thing with the special revenue funds, these dollars are typically restricted for specific purposes. You can see here, the ambulance did have an increase during the year. A lot of that's just driven by fees and where your costs are at. And then your EDA revolving loan. So those are the, the main majority of where those dollars are at. There is also communication funds in there as well. It has a, a decent amount of dollars in there, but one thing to note again, these are, these are dollars that are kind of set aside specifically for these purposes, or for these purposes that do have restrictions tied to it. So you can't use the EDA revolving loan dollars to buy a squad car, um, to do that sort of things. Not a whole lot of change during the year outside of ambulance. If you want to go to the next slide, Brian. Again, a lot of these dollars are either A restricted or B committed for specific purposes. Um, that would either take council resolution to, to decommit or have those dollars, um, spent down for that, for that specific purpose. Okay. And then the debt service, um, you do have a lot of cash in your debt service funds, and that's probably where you have a lot of flexibility on. You can see there's a lot of debt that is dropping off in twenty twenty, um, or twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. So you have some flexibility there. And again, you know, Brian's kind of on top of things there on, on where these dollars can be spent. You know, can you, can you, um, pay off a bond early? Can you pay off that capital project deficit? Can you finance something internally? Uh, again, there's, there's some flexibility there to be had with some of those dollars as these bonds mature. You can see the two thousand eleven A is dropping off in twenty twenty, the two thousand eleven B is dropping off in twenty twenty-one. Um, so you're going to have some, some cash flow savings on those bonds. Any questions?
Just to, um, sort of follow up on that, the conversations that Lane and, um, Tom Olinger and I have had are specifically related to the two thousand twelve A bond. That one, we think we may have enough money to pay off, and that gets into utilizing the levy that we would have for that bond to then allocate towards that deficit that we have, that, uh, that seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar general project deficit. It is callable. It was callable in two thousand nineteen, but I don't think we had the, the cash amount to do it. If we have the cash amount to do it, and I was again, working with Tom and Lane on this, we may be able to do that and then get rid of that so, uh, project fund over about a four or five-year period, we could eliminate that and that would put us on, we'd have no deficit in that fund. Our bond rating would be subject to a possible increase because we wouldn't have that, uh, excess liability out there. So when Lane talks about what we're looking at in terms of, uh, trying to improve that status, that's kind of what we've been talking about.
Anybody else, anything else to add on that side? Otherwise, we can go on to the enterprise funds. All right. So we'll start with the water fund. This is going to be a little bit convoluted just because of the time, you know, some of the refunding bonds from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. But typically what you want in your enterprise funds is for your blue graph on the top, your blue bar on the top graph to exceed your gray and your green on the top graph. So basically what that is is saying that your operating receipts in blue are going to be covering your operating dispersments in gray and your, and your debt payments in green. So if you look at twenty nineteen, you do have positive cash flow. Um, and you can see on the bottom graph what that did to the cash balances. So the cash balances are going to be in the blue, blue bar. So your cash went from three hundred eighty thousand in the water to about four hundred and sixty-five. So there was a positive cash flow, um, during the year. What we would recommend as auditors is a minimum target cash balances is anywhere from fifty percent of where your operating costs are, plus have a year's worth of reserves to pay off your next year's debt payments. So you know, cash is increasing, but, um, you're a little bit short of where we would recommend as auditors and what our professional opinion is. Again, what we would recommend is, is having a plan in place on where your cash flows are at, where your capital needs are at, and, and trying to time that out and making sure that things are, are sufficient to, to operate not only positively, but also to have a, have a sufficient balance in place to, um, to cover any capital, any unanticipated capital expenditures, whether, whether it's water main breaks or pump replacements, that sort of thing. Um, just kind of a contingency in place there. Again, you know, there, there's been some debt that's dropped off in the water fund as well. And you can see there was a bunch of cash in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, but really that was just dollars that were set aside due to the timing of, of the refunding bonds and trying to get better interest rates on those bonds. So while it says you had cash on hand is really kind of restricted for that purpose of paying down the debt. Um, so it really wasn't available at, for your spend, for your um, any other purpose besides that. Okay. So the same thing with the sewer fund. Um, you can see that the sewer fund has not been cash flowing as well. Uh, again, there was a spike in twenty eighteen just due to some, I think it was capital appreciation bond that ended up getting refinanced and paid off. But, um, you know, where we would recommend anywhere from about that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is where it's been at the last, last three years outside of that spike in the, in the capital appreciation bond funding. And you can see at, in the top graph, you can see there has been that deficit from the blue between the gray and the green and how that's affecting the cash flows in the bottom graph. So about two hundred thousand dollars in cash in twenty eighteen did decrease to about thirty-three thousand in cash in twenty nineteen. So again, always look at where your sewer rates are at. Are they charging enough for base, um, for usage, any connection fees, kind of that sort of thing? Making sure that, um, your operating receipts are, are cash flowing your costs appropriately. Okay. Stormwater, this is going to be a little bit easier to see just because of the nature of the activity and there's no, they don't actually, stormwater doesn't have any debt in their bonds, uh, in their fund. Uh, so you can see where the, the cash flows have been at in the stormwater right around that ninety thousand dollars a year compared to their costs. You can see the, the costs in the top graph had been increasing compared to where the, where your receipts are at, um, but still generating positive cash flow. Um, as you can see, the last three years, the effect of that and the, uh, on your total cash balances increasing from seventeen to eighteen to nineteen to about one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in twenty nineteen.
And, uh, the reason why, uh, we're looking so good here is we haven't had any capital projects, as Lane said, but, um, the Circle Drive project is going to have a very large component on stormwater. Uh, that's going to be probably, uh, more costly than sewer component and possibly even the water component because, uh, there's going to be a lot of stormwater that has to be done up there. And so starting in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, you will see a, um, debt service component to the stormwater fund similar to the water and sewer.
Yep. And as that happens, you know, it's just always good to consider, you know, are again, are your rates enough? And are your user fees, are your base fees where they need to be at? You know, really, for the the water, the sewer and the storm, you want the people who are using those, using the assets of those funds to be paying back, paying back those funds based off the activity in there. So overall, if you look at total cash investment balances by type over the last three years, you know, a big piece of it, again, is that purple, which is going to be your debt service funds. Like Brian said, there's a lot of cash in there based off that 2012 refunding, which refunded, I think, six bonds. So got a little bit, a little bit convoluted as that went through. So there's some sufficient cash in there. But overall, your total cash balances in the city have have been pretty steady over the last three years, right about that four and a half million dollars. Okay. So end here on some some key city ratios, kind of what we'll look at is just some taxes, tax rates, some debt activity, and then just sign us some trends on where you're at compared to other cities. So what you'll look at here is the any line in blue is going to be the city of Montgomery. Any green is going to be class four city. So what the state considers class four cities, so they really don't. They really don't, I wish they split them out a little bit more. We do have some calculations for class five cities, which we kind of calculate ourselves. But any class four cities or any cities in the state that are under 10,000 in population. So given your population, it might be a little bit skewed. I think this is weighed a little bit heavier towards that 10,000 in population. But if you look at where your tax rate has been at over the last four years compared to other cities, your size and other cities in the sewer county, which is are going to be the gray bar, you're trending in the right direction. So now your tax rate has been going down, which is good to see. And you can see the downward trend in the in the taxes per capita as well, over the last few years. So really, overall, you're you're pretty much right in line on tax per capita basis. So you have about $550. And that's compared to cities your size, 549, and then cities in the sewer county, about five or 491. So again, very comparable on the taxes per capita side. If you were to take class five, class five cities and add that to that, I think you'd actually be even more comparable to that and be right in line with with other cities throughout the state. Same thing on the debt per capita, you can see as that that is being paid off, like we mentioned, that debt per capita is dropping. And that's another reason why you have some flexibility in your taxes per capita, is you don't have to levy as much necessarily for some of those debt payments. Like Brian said, if someone, some of those other bonds drop off, and if you do decide to pay off the 2012 A, again, it gives you just more flexibility with where your taxes and where you want it, where you can dedicate those. And then if you look at it as on a percentage basis and a percent of a percentage of expenditures, again, you're right in line with your peers throughout the state and throughout the county. Okay. Current expenditures and capital expenditures per capita, again, you know, you're right in line. You can see the trend in the blue bar has been increasing from 17 to 18 to 19. We kind of saw that earlier with the increases in your public safety and your public works expenditures. So that's kind of the main two drivers of that. And then your capital on the bottom graph, those are kind of your one time expenditures that really aren't reoccurring. It's kind of on an as needed basis. You're a little bit lower than some of your peers, but really that, again, it's kind of on an as needed basis. So it's really as projects come up. You know, where the city has been going the last few years, it has been increasing some of those fund balances and and setting just some dollars aside compared to where things were at 10, eight, 10 years ago. So typically, when that happens and trying to build reserves, capital expenditures are a little bit less than where others throughout the state would be. Expenditures by program. So again, we kind of looked at this earlier, really, overall, again, comparing your blue to the green to the gray, you're right in line. You're a little bit higher on the public safety side of things. Yeah, I really don't have a great reasoning for that. And this is kind of more of a just informational for for everybody here. But outside of that, you know, you're pretty much right in line with your peers. And then the same thing on the on your per capita revenues. Again, for the most part, you're you're right in line. You can see where the majority of your revenue sources are at. Again, it's going to be your taxes and your governmental. That's covering the majority of your of your governmental expenditures. And with that, I think that's the last slide. I'm not going to touch a whole lot on your water and your debt service coverage. We already discussed. We already discussed those earlier on where your cash flow in the water and sewer funds. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this one or the next slide, Brian, so you can kind of skip zones. And that is it for me. And also a lot to go through in a half hourish. Again, it's kind of an overall big picture on where the city is at, where the city is going, where the city has been, and that sort of thing. So does anybody have any questions? For me?
Um, thank you, Lane. I'm going to go through each council member quick and ask if they have any questions for you. Councilmember Lombrick, do you have any comments or questions?
I have would be in the, for example, the water fund that was running currently below the target balance that you would like to see Brian or Shane or whomever, do we have a plan to to remedy that so that we can bring that closer to the target?
So that's what the Public Works Advisory Board does every single year. They take a look at our revenue and expenditure and where we're going with future projects. And then they adjust, make recommendations to adjust the the rates. We've cash flowed positive over the last couple of years. Partly, a lot of that had to do with the, I think Lane mentioned it, the connection fees that we have been collecting on new construction. And that has really been beneficial. However, we do keep an eye on it. And one of the things that I know the the Public Works Advisory Board actually talked about last year was bringing in a firm to actually do a detailed rate analysis on our water sewer and stormwater. We've done it in-house using a model that we got from West, West Virginia or North Carolina, I can't remember what, the School of Finance. And it's been, it's been a good tool for the to get us where we are. But I think we're going to have to actually do a detailed rate analysis because we're going to be having these road projects coming in. It's going to add debt service. And so we want to make sure that that we're doing the right thing in terms of rates. And so that's something that the Public Works Advisory is going to be discussing and recommending to the council here, probably the next couple, three months on putting together either Baker Tilly or Abdo or whoever elders that does these rate analyses and do a detailed rate analysis. That answer your question?
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Kubisch, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, a little bit on that sewer bill or the sewer fund, do we have any projections of where it's going to stand after our slight increase and also with the revenue from the new Craig, what they're dumping at our site?
So the the estimation for where we're going to be with the rate increases, we will certainly be closer to the revenues meeting expenditures over the next couple of years with that rate increase. And the revenue from New Prague is really, it was totally, you know, unbudgeted. And so I think in February, they had a, or it was a marks, they had a $33,000 bill that they, you know, had to pay for their dumping. And it was like 18 or 19,000 the month before. So that'll, that'll be very similar to what happens in the water fund with the connection fees. We will see a one time bump this year in revenues, but it's not going to be something we can rely on going forward. And that again, is is why we and why we need to do this rate study. There's also one big public finance administration bond or public facilities authority bond that we have two more years to pay. And the principal and interest on those is just about $500,000. And that drops off in 2023, I believe. So once that goes, then our revenue to expenditure is going to be significantly better. We're going to get hit a low point, probably in 2020, this year, 2021. And then cash is going to increase after that, because that huge bond is going to be off the books.
Thank you.
Councilmember Forcell, any questions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McGuire, any questions or comments?
Just, just a comment. Thanks, Lane, for all your work on that. It's a lot of numbers for me to digest. I'm not, it's not what I do every day. So it's, it's a lot to go through. I just thank you for pointing out the what we may see with our stormwater fund when we start our project on the north side of town. I guess it's a small, probably a relatively small part of that project, but the it'll change that budget quite significantly. And so that was good, just to be kind of aware of that, something to be thinking about as we go forward. But otherwise, no, thank you for your efforts on putting our audit together.
Yeah, and we try to keep things as layman as possible. I know it is a lot of numbers to get to dig in, to go through. And you know, that's kind of what I mentioned and what I would propose to, like Brian said, you know, always have that plan in place and have that outlook from from five years out. And you know, like Brian said, you have debt dropping off. Here's where I can take on maybe a new project, add some new debt, without really significantly affecting where rates are at or where tax levies are at to help cash flows. But thank you.
And I have just one question. That would be when you you stated earlier about class four cities, did I hear you correctly? That you said that's typically cities around 10,000 and less? Is that correct?
Yeah. So the state kind of lumps. So what happens is we get all the data from the state. So we get them all from their 2018 audit reports. So it's always a year behind. So we do a data request from the office of the state auditor. So we get all of their audit reports. We compile that information. And then they have some internal tracking that they use for their purposes. So class one cities, I think, are pretty much the largest cities in the state, the Minneapolis, the Rochester, the Duluth. And then they kind of started chopping it down from based off population size on that. So I think what happens is it's 25,000 to 100,000 is class three, or class two, 10,001 to 25,000 is class three, and then anybody in 10,000 under is class four. So that's how they kind of lump their cities together.
So in the charts, it's, it's, it's kind of clear how to compare to the cities that are within the sewer county, I mean, where Montgomery is sitting. But in your, your opinion, because there's really no way to gauge this, if we're using a class four number, how are we in line with cities that would be comparable in size throughout the state? Like that 3,000 or would we, are we going to be pretty comparable in in line?
Here, and let me, actually, let me, let me share my screen here, Brian, if that works for you. So we do, so what we did for this year is we actually took, we actually did a data, we filtered our own data. Oh, I can't share my screen. That's okay. We actually took our own data and compared, we compiled all, so we kind of created our own class five, which is 2,500 in population and under, just because, like you said, that they can be skewed, because there is a lot of cities that that get lumped into that, they get lumped into there. So we do, we did compile our own of the class five. Unfortunately, it didn't make it into here. But for example, for like the tax rate, if I were to look at class five cities for the tax rate, over the last five years for class five cities, it was 104.6, 103.7, and 103.5. So compared to the city of Montgomery, where you were right, basically right in line with that in 2016, 100.7, where that your tax rate has been dropping from 107 down to 77% in, in 2019. So on tax rate side, you're, you're definitely going the right way. And then on the taxes per capita, too, those are pretty close to where other cities in the sewer county are at. So looking at 2019, Montgomery is at 553, and other classified cities were at 478. So for the biggest one that changes is going to be your tax rate and your taxes per capita, for the most part. A lot of times with the enterprise funds, most, most cities kind of operate the same way. Granted, there are a few outliers, but most of the time, you're going to see the big change is going to be on the on the tax rate, just because there's, there's less people to to cover some of those functions.
Okay. Thank you. That that answered my question. Unless we have any additional questions, I think, I think we we can move on from that. I thank you as well for that presentation was very, very thorough.
Yeah. And Brian has my contact information. So if anybody has any questions for me, feel free to reach out, let me call on my cell phone. I'll be happy to answer anything that comes up.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along then to 4.2, Police Department Report, Chief Hens.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. You have the the packet there. I do not have a copy of the last month's report in front of me, but the numbers are down a little bit just due to the coronavirus and kind of just a drop in calls. Kind of some things going around at the PD. We've been working pretty diligently about obtaining the PPEs for the officers and staff. We did order up, we got 20 gowns, 20 face shields. We got a couple gallons of hand sanitizer and N95 and P95 masks. So the officers are instructed to dawn those should they respond to a call and be dealing with pretty much anybody at this point. I do have the officer sanitizing the squad cars at the beginning and ends of their shifts. So they're getting wiped down with Clorox bleach wipes four times a day. So we're trying to mitigate any sort of possible contamination to our officers. As for myself, I've been attending biweekly WebEx meetings with the department, the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security. They kind of go through the data that gets funneled up to Governor Walz. And we kind of get a little heads up of the direction that I believe the state is going to be be heading towards, you know, possible soft openings now of certain businesses. Like you guys know, the golf course did open this last weekend, which is great for them, great for the public and, you know, people being able to get out of the house and yet maintain social distancing. I did send out an email to Administrator Hacken, I believe he forwarded it along in the update. We did have the signs, the street department switched the stop signs that were at the corner of Second Southeast and Elm. They were the only stop signs at one of our railroad crossings in town. And just to be consistent, we did switch those out to yield signs. Calls are down as expected with everyone or for the majority of people sheltering at home, or the stay at home ordered by Governor Walz. People have been maintaining that pretty well. We do have a few exceptions to it, but you know, just with businesses being closed and the like, our call, calls for services came down quite a bit. Again, we're looking forward to the city of Montgomery opening up, get the restaurants and establishments open and kind of get back to normal. Yeah, like I said here on my notes, town seems to be sheltering home at well or home well. Again, no major issues. As for trainings for our officers, pretty much statewide, all trainings are either postponed or canceled. And I would suspect that's going to go well into fall until we can get up and going. And again, like with a virtual meeting like this, the possibility of having those is is quite a possibility. And other than that, I have business as usual, or as can be expected with this. We do, or we are maintaining the PD being locked during the day. So if people do need to get a hold of us, please call. We we are still staff 24 hours a day. We just may not want to have face to face meetings, so we can handle calls over the phone if we can. But again, But again, if we do need to be there, we definitely will. Um, and then one kind of administrative side, uh, within the next couple of weeks, or hopefully next week, we should have, uh, I believe we have four forfeited vehicles, um, and the twenty thirteen, uh, squad car or the Charger, uh, that we will be posting onto Minbed, um, to get those out of the way of, uh, some city employees. And then just, uh, to gain a little revenue from those. So other than that, that's, it's been business as usual. Anyone have any questions for me?
Comment for Chief Hens?
Yeah.
So the last time I had a moving violation was not making a complete stop at that stop sign. And, uh, so thank you. I, I, I've always had a problem making complete stops there.
And, and quite a few people did. So, uh, yeah, I think a yield sign is, uh, is a good addition there.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Hens?
Hey, give me just a comment.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your diligence to keep our city safe.
We're trying. Uh, we, you know, we're still maintaining a lot of visibility. You know, some of our self-initiated, uh, actions have decreased a little bit. Again, that's just, uh, in a little direction from myself and guidelines from the state. But we are still out there providing the service we have.
Great job. Thank, thank you, Chief Hens.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see the agenda up anymore. Is, is it not up or is it just, I maybe clicked a button or something? Or is everyone getting the agenda yet? Is it up again?
It's back. Now we got it.
Now it's back. Okay. We'll move along to the administration section. Five point one would be the consider approval of, of a recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board to retrofit all lighting fixtures on First Street with LEDs. Mr. Heck?
Uh, members of the council, uh, this was something that, um, Public Works Advisory actually talked about a couple of times, and we've been talking about it in-house for, I don't know, almost a year. Uh, we've been having, uh, a lot of issues with the decorative streetlights on, uh, First Street. And, uh, with their blowing out quite a bit and quite frequently. And then also there have been more frequent, uh, issues with the little mini Cobra headlights we have at, uh, some of the intersections. So we, uh, Chris actually got out and, and got some quotes from Creo Electric and Ruland Electric to have the, uh, fixtures replaced. And we looked at the decorative fixtures at first, and that was about a thirty-two hundred dollar project. But we also then started talking about, I think there's twenty-four Cobra headlights as well to swap out. And, um, the option that they went with is, uh, this type of a light. And the total project cost to swap out all of the Cobra headlights and the decorative lights to an LED fixture is, um, nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars to have Creo Electric do it. Uh, in addition to that, we will get roughly twenty-four hundred dollars back in rebates from MVEC for going to the LED lights. And it's estimated that the LED, LED lights will save the city about eighty, use about eighty percent less electricity. And they're going to last, um, anywhere from eight to ten years before you're going to have to mess around with replacement. So the return on investment for this, uh, particular project is, um, uh, quite good, and the Public Works Advisory Board is recommending the council approve this, uh, project.
Thank you. Um, at our last meeting, we approved the, we approved this project originally. I believe it was set at like ten thousand and, and, uh, it, this has come back to council now because, uh, the original estimate was kind of figured incorrectly. Is, is that right?
Yeah, that, that is exactly right. Um, we didn't realize that the swap out of the Cobra head was going to be so much more than the swap out for the decorative globe lights. And that's, uh, that's why, uh, we had to bring it back to the PU, Public Works Advisory and, uh, council.
Good, thank you. Um, councilmember Lambert, do you have any comments or questions?
The question that comes to mind for me is we have a lot of other streetlights in town all over. Do we have responsibility to, enough to update those as, as long, or as well as those on Main Street? Or do we, are we just responsible for Main Street and not the residential areas?
So we are responsible for First Street, Fifth Street. And I believe, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have some, some, uh, street lighting in the, uh, North Ridge area that we're also responsible for. The majority of the intersection light Cobra headlights are the responsibility of MVEC. And when those go out, they are swapping those out with, uh, um, LED light two. Chris is, did I get that right?
Yeah, and we, we have everything basically in North Ridge up there in those, that lighting area. And anytime anything goes out up there, we do switch out to LED at that time. They will kind of look a little bit different than what they are at that time, but they're all getting at that age, at that age when they are going to start going out, and we might as well go right to the LED and be done with it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kubish, any questions or comments?
Um, now with, uh, Chris saying that up in North Ridge, what's the cost difference if we would rather than just changing all, a light when it, when it, uh, burns out or fails to having the contractor here or whoever we hire to do it and change them all at, all at once?
Great, great question. Um, I guess I can look into that and see, because we don't really have, uh, there's not that many lights up there in North Ridge. I could take a count and see which ones are LED, and we can definitely get that count and see what the cost would be. I would say roughly it's going to be that two hundred to three hundred dollars basically per bulb, I would say. Just shooting from the hip right now, but I mean, I can get those final numbers and bring them back to you.
Yeah, it's kind of a comparison, because when, I'm sure when you call somebody for one light, they're charging you travel time and whatnot, or unless you're doing it yourself, I don't know.
No, we're not, we're not doing it ourselves. It's, um, electrical stuff. I don't, I don't like electrical, especially with that stuff anyways. But that's, that's something for the professionals that know how to hook that stuff up the right way. So I can definitely talk with, uh, Creo or, and Ruland. And see, you know, even when we do, say we do these lights on Main Street to even get a couple extra LED lights there, so we have them. Um, so then they're not carrying the stock all the time for lights that way, too, so. And we can always have a couple on hand, so if they do ever go out, we have it there, and then they're not ordering one or two at a time. But I'll definitely check into the North, North Ridge, so.
Councilmember, uh, Forcell, do you have any questions or comments?
I was just curious. Um, Brian said something about us having blowouts, uh, you know, with the lighting. Um, is, are they, is there, are there, is there a power surge on Main Street or something like that? To where they could be, you know, if we put these more expensive lights in, um, would we possibly be facing the same issues? Or is it just, uh, the, the lighting assemblies themselves that once we switch them out, we should be able to, um, not have to worry about them as much?
Yeah, and a gr- a great question, Bob, here. Um, more than likely, these are all just cons- cons- regular light bulbs that, they're not LED, they just, they go out very fast. And just from, since I've been here now, I think we've replaced almost four or five up there of just putting back in the regular bulbs because, you know, we didn't know what we're going to do with LED and stuff like that, so. Um, I think we'll go on the LED route. I think we're going to be able to be more efficient with, uh, power and less, uh, less, um, maintenance on it. I don't think the power surge is going to hurt it.
Yeah, I think the other issue is they're old.
Exactly.
That, that's probably more the issue than anything is they are, they are old. We can certainly, you know, Chris can certainly talk to, uh, Creo and see if there's some kind of a electrical overload or something. That's way over my, uh, way over my head.
Yeah, over my head, too.
I guess the other question I have is, you know, I, I know LEDs are a lot brighter than, uh, than normal bulbs, you know, are we going to be, do we need as many? Are we going to be lighting Main Street up like a Christmas tree?
I, I would say we're going to, uh, Main Street's going to be bright. Biggest thing is, like on our decorative ones, um, we can switch the globes to a point to where you can dull it, dull it down. That's one way. Um, a lot of our globes right now are really staying that orange stain, you know, that orange or yellow stain right now. Just from the con- condensant light, so. We'll kind of have to play that by ear and see how it goes. Uh, I think it's just from cost savings of eighty percent for power usage is astronomical right now.
Um, I think what you're going to see is something similar to what you have on Fifth Street. And I think, yeah, it will be brighter, uh, particularly at the intersections where the new Cobra headlight is really going to direct the light down on the intersection. It's not going to spill, um, as they do now. And I honestly, I, I think that from a couple of business owners I talked to, having a little bit more light down there is not a bad thing. And I think from a law enforcement perspective, having a little bit more light down there is probably a good thing, too.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember McGuire, any questions or comments?
No, I think it's a great idea and, and, uh, the sooner the better, so.
That would be my only comment as I, I fall in line with, uh, Mr. McGuire. I would entertain a motion on, uh, on this, uh, retrofitting the lighting fixtures on First Street with LEDs.
I'll make that.
Second.
So we got, we got Mr. McGuire as the first, uh, Mr. Forcell as the second. Uh, Brian, you want to call a roll?
We will do that. Um, councilmember Kubish. Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Lambrecht.
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell.
Yes.
Mayor Isner.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to five point two. Consider approval of Public Works Advisory Board for the purchase of lift station pumps for the North Ridge Lift Station for a cost of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, and Shane can, uh, jump in on this one. I'll start it off. We have a lift station, I believe it's a temporary lift station at, uh, North Ridge. Um, but it's been there since the development was done. It's probably going to be there um, until that, uh, main road, uh, gets, uh, built, which is going to be a long time down, down the road. So there's two pumps in there, and in addition to the pumps, they're the original pumps. We've rebuilt them a couple of times, so, uh, it's time to do a change out. We also have to change the, uh, structure on how they're lifted. Right now, I think it's ropes and pulleys. And they're going to put the, um, they're going to put them on a rail system so they're easier, uh, more efficient to get out. So this cost of seven, four, forty-eight is for both pumps and, uh, the rail system. And Shane, if you want to just kind of comment on the issues you've had with them?
Basically, the rail system, um, it's like a, two r- ropes with two metal br- brackets on it, but it's kind of flimsy and pulling them out kind of gets jerky. Can you hear me even?
No, yeah.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I thought I was muted. Sorry. I think it'll be a lot better in the long run, just because it'll be easier to get them out, and they won't be flipping, so flimsy getting them out.
Okay. Any questions or, uh, I'll run through here. Mr. Lambrecht, any questions or comments?
None.
Mr. Kubish?
Oh.
Mr. Forcell?
None.
Mr. McGuire?
No.
Okay, I don't, uh, have any questions or comments either. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of the lift station pumps or the North Ridge Lift Station?
I'll make that motion.
But, Butch made the first. Who do we have for second?
I'll second.
Lambrecht second. All right. Mr. Heck, call a roll?
Uh, councilmember Lambrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Kubish?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Mayor McGuire. Mayor, Mayor Isner.
Uh, yes.
Oops, sorry.
No, that's okay. He, he, he still is, he is the mayor. Okay, great. Uh, let's move along to five point three then. Uh, consider approval of the Public Works Advisory Board recommendation to replace the PLC circuit for the fire screen in the pre-treatment plant.
Uh, I'm going to let Shane talk about this one, because this one is one of those items that's kind of over my head. I just know it's an electrical component that, uh, needs to be replaced, so I'll let Shane update you on it.
Basically, about a month or two ago, we had the, uh, the fine, the fine screen go. We had to manually bypass, and it takes out most of the rags, but not all of them. But I'm worried about the PLC controller controls going out, because without them, we'll be manually bypassing till it gets replaced. It might take a while for the product to be here. I'd rather just keep it running and just be so much easier. It takes out all the rags, sticks, debris, and anything that makes it, that goes through those lift station pumps except for the grit.
Okay.
And that's the purpose, is to take out the rags and.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any questions or comments, Mr. Lambrecht?
None here.
Mr. Kubish?
None.
Mr. Forcell?
Uh, the only question I have is, remember when we took the tour of the place? The, uh, those circuits and stuff, they were already pre-outdated. Are we going to go with, um, like newer updated stuff or what are we going to do there?
For now, we're just going to do the, eventually we have to update everything, but for now, I think I'm just, we're just going for the PLC controls for the fine screen. You want to hold on everything, then?
No, I'm, I'm, I was just, I was just curious on what, uh, you know, the deterioration of stuff is up there.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'll jump in here. Um, we are working on a, on a capital plan for the water and the wastewater plant. And the SCADA system and the controls is one of those items. I don't think we want to, we want to jump into that big project at, at this time. I think what we need to do is replace this particular electronic component so that the fine screen works the way it's supposed to. So we're not bypassing the, uh, the fine screen and having rags and stuff go through the system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGuire, any questions or comments?
Nope, I'm good.
None from me. Do, I will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, to replace the PLC circuit for the fire screen.
So moved.
Mr. McGuire is first. Do we have a second? Mr. Kubish is the second. Mr. Heck, would you like to call a roll?
Uh, councilmember Lambrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Kubish?
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell?
Yes.
Mayor Isner?
Yes. Motion passes. Um, okay. Number five point four, consider approval of a Public Works Advisory Board recommendation to purchase a Freightliner plow, plow truck to replace the nineteen ninety-two Ford L eight thousand. At a cost of two hundred twenty thousand dollars, nine hundred, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars based on state contract price to be financed over five years.
Uh, yeah, and then Chris can uh, certainly chime in here since uh, it'll be the uh, street department mainly uh, plow truck. The L eight thousand is uh, nineteen ninety-two, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And uh, it's um, had its fair share of issues over the last uh. Few winters, um, and it's time to, time to get that truck replaced. Um, the Public Works Advisory Board did talk about and consider. Acquiring a second loader that would be utilized for plowing and other things. And in the end, uh, the recommendation to staff is to go with another truck just from the standpoint of uh, our Sterling is also, I think, a two thousand two. And so that's gonna be looking to replace as well at some point. If that truck goes down, then we really don't have anything that can sand. Uh, if we have two loaders. So in order to ensure that we have uh, sanding capacity, hauling capacity, other things, the recommendation is to go with this uh, single axle. Truck. Um, this is a total build. This is the chassis, the box, the plows, uh. Basically a turnkey, turnkey truck. I think it's uh, twelve to sixteen months out after we order it for build. Um, and so because we, we don't have the cash in our equipment fund. Uh, we're recommending to finance it over a five-year period of time. Uh, there's two options to do that. Uh, the first option would be to begin payments basically upon delivery. Um, so we would order it. We wouldn't have any down payment. We wouldn't have any uh, cash out of hand. Until we take delivery on the truck and then we would start the uh, start the payments. The other is to take the truck. Have it for a year and then start the payments. Um, the interest rate is lower on that option, but our annual payment is higher. So what we are recommending that the council decides to go through with this purchase is to use the option one. Which is a five-year um, payment at about forty-seven and a half thousand dollars a year over five years. Chris, you got anything to add?
I got nothing. I'm, I mean, it's a, everything that we looked at on this truck. And everything that we specked out with Cry Steel. Um, I blew the. Freightliner right now. I know Prior Lake's running a lot of these trucks, so does the Craig. Um, uh, Freightliner with Harrison Truck Center, they're great and favorable for service. Um, and everything from all our body stuff to plows is all gonna be through Cry Steel. Um, we have great working relationship with them guys with all of our stuff that we have through them. So I guess I can entertain any other questions that anybody would have about this truck.
I will uh, ask Mr. Lambrecht, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Sounds like a good deal.
Mr. Kubish.
Nothing here.
Mr. Forcell.
My questions have been answered.
Mr. McGuire.
His question, as far as taking them, all the plows off, will, will it, will we. Use that truck seasonally with all that equipment off of it, or is it too big of a chore to take all these, the plows off of a truck like that?
The, on this truck will be a lot easier to take everything off. Um, as of right now, even like with our Sterling, we take all our wing parts off. The only thing that stays on is our underbody. Um, and then everything that is on the new truck, uh, just to let you guys know, we are going stainless steel. Um. We're hoping that this is gonna allow this truck to be able to stick around for that twenty, twenty-five plus years. Um, the way that we are cleaning our trucks. Um, the only thing I guess I would recommend that we would look at in about maybe ten years after we'd have this truck. Is getting the underb- or the frame re-powder coated and um, sprayed again, so that way, because that's our only steel parts on that truck. To make it look good.
There was a, Chris did ask me a question on color uh, for the truck. Um, so uh, I think that we can do.
Any color we want.
What are the color options, Chris?
Um, the color option that we have right now, um, that we have in the spec is um, orange. Um, but there is no cost difference if we go with a, say, the gray color that we went with the F three fifty for the sewer plant. Um. I think maybe I'm starting to lean more towards the gray just so that we have every truck kinda looks the same eventually someday. Um, otherwise, I like the big, big bright orange though too, because it's more visibility. So I mean, it's, it's totally up to you guys if you guys want me to go for a different color or what you want, so.
Well, personally for my, personally for myself, uh, you know, as we, as we move forward, starting to brand the city and stuff like. And things like that, uh, it, it's nice to get vehicles all the same color and. I, I, I would leave it open, up to you. I mean, honestly, I, I don't have a preference. Um. It, it would be nice to have things looking similar, but. But then again, you know, you're, you guys are the ones that have to use it and, and maintain the streets for the residents, so however you feel you'd be the most visible and. And uh, color really doesn't matter how it operates.
Yeah, I, I think at my opinion, I guess, I think I'm gonna try to stick all, everything gray. That's kinda the route we're going with all our trucks and that's where I would probably lean towards.
You know, uh, if I could weigh in on this, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
It, one thought it might be if we did it the gray, that maybe differentiates our. Snow removal equipment a little bit from the county and from the state, which are all orange and can be. I don't know if I would say confusing, but sometimes you don't know if it's the county or the city or the state. On a, on a snowplow job and this way it would, it would uh, be easier to identify that that was the city doing that job, so.
Yep, I totally agree, Mick.
The only comment that I have on this is uh, I was on the Public Utilities or. Public Utilities Advisory Board for. Several years along with um, um, Councilmember Forcell, Councilmember uh, Kubish, Councilmember. Um, McGuire. And this is something that has been in the discussion for many, many years. Um, it's time that this uh, L eight thousand gets replaced. Um, so with that. Comment, I'm gonna entertain a motion for approval of the purchase of Freightliner plow truck to replace the nineteen ninety-two Ford L eight thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
First, we have a second.
I'll second that.
So we got Mr. Forcell as the first, Mr. Uh, uh, Lambrecht as a second. Uh, Mr. Heck, would you like to call a roll?
Certainly will. Uh, Councilmember Kubish.
Yes.
Councilmember Lambrecht.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell.
Yes.
Mayor Isner.
Yes. Okay, we, we ran through five point five already, so we'll move along to uh, five point six. Uh, consider EDA emergency grant program to assist Montgomery small businesses affected by the COVID nineteen.
All right, I will uh, I will start this off and uh, then I wanna hand it over to Leah if she's still on. Um. Because this was really her uh, her thought. Um, she, she brought this to me and she brought it to the EDA and I think um. It's a really good idea, so essentially, um, what we're, what the EDA discussed at their Thursday meeting. It's to provide small grants to businesses that have been affected by the governor's executive order. Closing down most of the uh. Non-essential businesses, we'll say, uh, in the, in the state, and that's basically your bars, restaurants. Um, recreational facilities, hair cutting places, salons, uh, massage, therapy. Um, so from that point, I will uh, turn it over to Leah and she can update you on the uh, discussion the EDA had and the recommendations that they're making.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, as Brian mentioned, the EDA did discuss this program on Thursday. It was after I had um, reviewed and attended several webinars. Um, from various industries in terms of economic development and then also. Uh, locally from our Small Business Center in Mankato. So um, as we discussed it, there was multiple options that we needed to determine if we wanted to go with as a loan. Or as a grant, um, and what would be most effective for businesses. And the outcome uh, that you guys see before you is the recommendation from the EDA is to do a grant. Of a thousand dollars for businesses that were impacted by the two executive orders. Uh, twenty dash oh four and twenty dash oh eight. Um, I have put together an application on our website that can be submitted through the website and then also a paper version. Um, doesn't ask a whole lot other than, again, business information. Um, does ask some questions about. How the pandemic has affected their business, uh, some information about employment. I see my connection says it's on steady. All right, am I coming across okay?
We can still hear you just fine.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna stop my video just as a way to hopefully help with that. Okay, so um, so going back to that, the main criteria was that we wanted the applicant to be um, the business owner or. Share in the ownership of the business. Um, again, that it needs to be a part of that executive order, which covers um, several businesses. And then um. That they have a physical address within the city and an actual physical location. Um, so it couldn't be a home-based business or one that maybe shares space with another. Um, so. Guess, let's see, I'm just trying to look at the memorandum and then what I've been getting in terms of the application. Um. Other than that, I guess that, that's all I have in terms of the intent was to provide emergency relief. Um, I did do a quick survey to businesses through the chamber and then through some um, email contacts that. I or EDA members or Brian had. And so from the survey, it did appear that a small grant. Um, amongst all the respondents would be most effective. Compared to those that said didn't need anything at this time. Um, so we anticipate probably between a twenty to thirty, hopefully. Um, actively participating in this emergency grant program. And then uh, the other thing I wanna note was um. Actually, I can't remember anymore, so. Um, but I did have a couple of questions that I know I've discussed with um, Mayor Isner. In terms of items that we weren't able to cover and I was hoping um, as council could maybe. Brainstorm a couple of those if there's a need to include that in terms of eligibility. Um, and I'll throw that, I guess, back to Tom, um, to maybe bring that up for the different council members.
Sure, excuse me. So the, the two main items that she brought up, um, so the first item was um. And, and she, she got some of these ideas from some other models, from other communities that uh, how they were handling things. And. So one of the, one of the thoughts was, um, the applicants that have multiple businesses, um, do we limit it to um. Say you're a business owner and you have two or three businesses, do we limit it down to um, one? Per individual, or would this be something that we would want to um. You know, add on to this little list here of, of uh. You know, limiting it to one. I, I think another, another thought that she had in her notes when we discussed this afternoon was uh. Maybe business owners with multiple businesses, you provide the first one thousand and for each additional business. You provide half of the grant, so it'd be another five hundred for each additional business. That was one of the uh, one of the thoughts, and I guess I will um, open that up to uh. Council to, to, to discuss that before we go to number two, um, just so we don't kinda confuse and jumble things together. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite the uh, first comment to Mr. Lambrecht since, since he and I are on the EDA board together and he was part of this initial discussion, so. Did you have anything to add to that? Councilmember Lambrecht.
Um, you know, having just heard for the first time now, um, I think it's a good idea to offer it. To someone owns multiple businesses to offer it for their others, but maybe at a reduced rate, thousand for the first. Uh, maybe the five hundred for the second, or you can do a thousand for the first, seven fifty for the second and five hundred for the third if they own three. I think it's a good idea to offer it beyond one business per owner, so to speak, so that all businesses. That have been affected can uh, can benefit from the program. That was the idea is to get money in the hands of. Those businesses to help with any utilities, lease, rent, whatever it may be that has impacted them with no customers coming through the front door.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Mr. Kubish, do you have any comments regarding that?
Uh, just a comment that uh, uh, be a great idea to help our local businesses.
Okay, um. Mr. Forcell, any comments on that uh, that first question?
I believe it's a good idea that we need to do that and I agree with uh, what uh, Mr. Lambrecht has uh, uh, is suggesting.
Okay, Mr. McGuire.
Um, I'll, I'll throw this out. I, I thought, I thought of this right away as we were talking about that. Um, is that if we said, you know, each uh, individual will be entitled to a grant per business. Um. During the first, let's say during the first run, round of funding, and I see we have approximately forty thousand dollars. And maybe we could do a round and kinda see where we're at and then we could have a second round of funding. Which could be, you know, the timing could be, I don't know, some weeks later. And then you could be eligible again for another thousand for a, a second business, and if there's a third round of funding. Could be eligible for, for that. And so rather than um. That way, you know, uh, you'd have, every business would have a chance to have a thousand dollars worth of funding in a grant. But they would be, they would be in, in different uh, funding cycles, I guess.
Okay, good points.
Just a thought.
I'm kind of neutral on this one. I could go either way. Um, I, I, I like Dennis's thoughts. I think that makes sense. Um. Then I can also look at it the other way and say, the intent is really to help the business thrive, not necessarily the individual. It's to keep the business still. Um, being able to uh. To uh, function after, you know, during this closing time, so. Really, I could go either way. It, it seems like the consensus is, is looking to do something more of uh. You know, provide a percentage for alternate. Alternate uh, businesses, you know, or additional businesses. So um. We'll come back to that one, so then we'll, then we'll go to the second question that Leah posed and it was uh. And it, it's actually, it's, it's a one that we didn't think about at the EDA is, do we wanna add a statement in this uh. In this program that, that the business should have been, that the business would need it, needed to have been in operation prior to the executive orders on March fifteenth. You know, we may have some businesses that weren't. Open at the time. They were maybe closed for um, for whatever reason. Do we want to add that language that they would have had to been in business and. Directly affected by those executive orders that they were required to close? Or do we, uh, she also had the question in there, or do we go three months even prior to that? So again, I will open with uh, Mr. Lambrecht if he has any comments on that.
Hey, Tom, before Dennis jumps in.
Yes.
On the, on the screen is the uh, proposed guidelines for the program. Um, Leah had shot this over to me, so I got it up for you. Um, so that would be um, sort of the uh, guidelines that we're looking at, so.
Okay, great. Thanks for sharing that. Mr. Lambrecht, do you have any comments on that, on that second question?
Yeah, I, I like the idea of obviously limiting it to businesses that have been open and I think at least three months prior to the executive order would be a good idea. Would have a businesses, the opportunity to have been established prior to the executive order. So I think the three month lead in previous to the order would be good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kubis?
I think if somebody has a seasonal business and they were closed prior to this, but were to be open, you know, coming up here, they should be eligible because they're going to be affected by it as well.
Okay, Mr. Forcell?
I agree with Mr. Kubis on it. The only question I do have is we do have some buildings with multiple businesses in them. How does that work with that? You know, is it by building or is it by business, you know? Like, say you have a strip mall where there's one building with multiple businesses in it. You know, I know that we have a few businesses here that, you know, a few buildings that have more than one business. How does that gonna work?
Oh, I think they all have separate addresses and that's sort of the the key. They're not, it's not for pop-up businesses in a in a one single space. So most of the businesses on First Street all have their own address. And I think that's the criteria that we're talking about. Leah, is that correct?
Yes, that it's it's the location that they operate out of. It's maybe not a vendor that they might sell their product.
Okay, Mr. McGuire, any questions or comments?
No, no, I think it's fine. I just to to comment on Butch's concern. If we're talking about established businesses, you know, I think seasonal businesses, you know, my businesses, we weren't real busy during January and February, but the business was established. So I think established businesses, even though they're seasonal, would be eligible if they met the other criteria. So I think they would, I don't I don't think we would exclude seasonal businesses in this. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I I think that is correct. If they've been, if they were established, whether they're seasonal or not previously or within the three months of the orders.
Okay.
Is that Leah? I saw you unmuted yourself. Is that close?
It is, it is. It was it'd be more if you are sort of in transition to starting your business, but we're not actually open for business by March fifteen. I will say, though, Brian and I have been working with two and I can think of a third that we're very, we're planning to open in April here. So I guess I don't want to include this as a limiting factor, but it was just more of a guidelines that I've seen at others and I wanted you guys to discuss. But I do want to make you aware that there are businesses that were intending to be open and probably have delayed that for reasons of this pandemic.
Okay. With those additional questions on there, I don't know if we really got a solid answer. It's kind of difficult. You know, in this forum and this setting to try and come up with that. So I guess what I would prefer maybe at this point is I'll go through one more time through the council members to see if they have any questions or comments on the entire program. And then I think we'll just look for someone to make a motion and include, you know, question one or question two, you know, however, we're gonna go with that. I I don't, does anyone see a better way to resolve those questions? We kind of all are kind of in a little different opinion on on some of that stuff.
Tom, if I can chime in here, my, what I heard and what I think the council members are leaning towards here is I I'm not sure about the the multiple businesses. I heard Dennis's comments on the multiple businesses. But on the opera, the last question, I think everybody has is in the in consensus that you should be established and operational at least three months before the executive orders went into place. But as far as how to treat the individual that may have two or three businesses, I think that may need a little bit more discussion because I don't think there was a solid consensus on that one.
Okay, yeah, I think you're correct on that. Well, we'll go through, we'll go through one last time. I'll start with Mr. Lambrecht and if you want to address that multiple business one last time and we'll see if we can get get a general consensus based on as I go through all the council members here.
Like you say, I would have the question, how many business owners do we have that have multiple businesses? Are we talking one or two or three or half dozen?
My best guess is probably a couple. I can't, you know, I only a couple come to mind, really, honestly, that would have more than one.
I guess I don't have a problem with if somebody owns two businesses getting thousand for each. My concern is that we've only allotted in the EDA the forty thousand. So I would like to make sure that everyone who applies is eligible to get the thousand. If forty-two applications come in and one happens to be a business owner who's applied three times, it wouldn't be right for one business owner to get three grants and one to get zero. I would just like to make sure and maybe we leave that particular component that they're all a thousand up to the forty thousand that's been allocated and we can leave that to Leah or Brian's discretion when the applications come in as to which category they would fall in. I would just want to make sure that each business that applies would be eligible for and have a thousand dollars available to them. Even thinking further beyond the guidelines here, we have businesses who have been open and remained open in a somewhat handicapped and maybe limping degree through all this, would also probably like to get money but don't fall under those two executive orders who are going to be excluded from this program. I'm not sure if there's any way that that we could include them as a discretionary offering also. And I guess we didn't talk about that in the EDA. We just talked about those who fell under the two executive orders, but there are businesses who remain open because they weren't in that order or they were in the exceptional category. And they have been suffering also. So there's kind of another question that I've thought of now as we're talking about this. This would be my two thoughts on the on the matter.
I'll just I'll just add to your comments there. I do believe when we talked in the EDA that we would, you know, we we put that, we put a number to start out at and that we could bring it back if we had to and call a special meeting. If we had a large group of applicants and we exceeded the the total amount that was allotted. So that there is that possibility to 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 bring that back again, but those are great questions. Mr. Kubis, do you have any questions or comments regarding this grant program? And also on question one about multiple businesses?
Concerning question one on multiple businesses, I think that they, yeah, that each each individual business should be able to apply for, but I would say that maybe have every individual apply for and if they have multiple businesses to apply at a later time, like let it go through one round. And then if there's still money left, then to say, okay, now my other business under the same roof or under the same ownership be also applied for the grant.
Okay, Mr. Forcell?
I I'm in agreeance with Mr. Lambrecht and stuff that we gotta, we gotta just take a look at it. And I think people should we all be able to figure it out, you know, make sure we get we get the money dispersed distributed properly for to try and help as many business owners as we can.
Okay, Mr. McGuire?
Yeah, okay, on the question about eligibility, I think that so so we don't have too big of a gray area, you know, we could say businesses impacted by the coronavirus could be eligible. Or we could be more specific and say, you know, businesses affected by the governor's executive order. That kind of cuts the gray area out of this. And so maybe initially that's the way to go because that does that does it takes out some of this gray kind of gray area that could be a little bit confusing. So I would go along with that part. It's businesses that were directly affected by those executive order, executive orders. And and I had that made the earlier comment about the the round of funding and we could do a first round. And if you own a business, you could apply. And then if we have funds left, you could apply for your second, another business in a second round of funding. And I guess I would kind of still go with that plan myself.
Okay, thank you. Again, with me, I'm kind of, I am kind of open-minded on this. I guess I could go either way. I probably would lean more to protecting the business itself than the owner because that's the intent is to try and keep the business hanging around. So I guess if we have a business owner that had multiple businesses, I'd rather see them. I would rather see them them be able to get a something for their business. I mean, the EDA gave us a recommendation of forty thousand. Us as council could technically probably increase that number just to assure that, to make sure that all businesses are hip. And then the last thing is I actually did receive a comment from Mr. Brockway. He just sent me a text message and the question was that he said asked was, what about pin curls where you have four different business owners on the same address in the same same place? I mean, that's how that place operates is four separate individual businesses out of one store front. How would that work? Does, do you have any any insight to that, Leah?
I don't, I don't know the structure of pin curls other than that the stylists are probably on a chair basis where they pay for their chair. But I would think that, trying to think of her name, that I would think she's the one that actually leases the space and pays the utilities, not all four stylists that rent a chair. So I guess, again, with under a salon structure, it is a little different, but that's again up for you guys to decide. The last thing I was gonna add, I guess, in listening to the conversation was we could do where for the first two weeks, it is open to those that are in that executive order. And again, have maybe a business apply if they have multiple business once. And then after that first two weeks, open it up to businesses that are not in that executive order, assuming there's funds remaining. And again, if there's businesses that or owners that have multiple businesses are then open to reapply for their other entities.
Okay, Brian, did you do you feel you got a good consensus out of this discussion? At least on the question one with multiple businesses?
So here's here's my understanding of what I've heard council discuss regarding this particular issue. So first of all, with multiple businesses, an owner that has more than one business, that they could apply for more than one, but there should be a a staged sort of first round. You know, we try and get everybody and then if there's funds left or funds available, then they can be considered if there's funds available for those other businesses that they may have. And again, I don't believe that there's a large number. I think maybe there's two or three people that would fall into that category. And then on the yeah, that's that was the main question. Yeah. So I I think that's the that's the consensus I heard. Is that, yes, they can, but let's get through a first round first. And then if there's dollars remaining, then we can, and if they have applied for them, we give it out to the everybody individually. If there's money available, then we can go back to the person that has, you know, two or three businesses and follow up with them on that. That's that was my understanding of where you're at. And as far as the pin curls, I would agree with Leah. I think the the main business owner is the person that's leasing the space that has the building in their name. They would be the one that 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 person would be eligible because they have the larger expenses.
Mr. Mayor, I I believe that's covered in in item three of the of those guidelines. And it talks about, it says, home-based or shared space locations are not eligible. So that, to me, would kind of talk about those shared spaces. So the the owner of the business would be eligible, but not those who maybe share that space.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be correct.
Yeah, I would agree with that because if you would look up the the certificate of ownership of the business, it's a sole proprietor business. It's not a shared business with multiple owners. There's one owner to that business on the state records.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Brockway, for the question, very good insight and insight to that problem.
Okay, well, I do believe that, you know, there's some, there is some you know, there's maybe some little loose-ended questions, but I think we got a pretty good consensus moving forward. Would someone like to a to make a motion on at least this first round of the local emergency relief grant?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Forcell is a first. We have a second.
Speaking as one who sits on the EDA, one of the the biggest concerns of the EDA was to get this money up to people ASAP. We met last week and created the program basically with the, if the council tonight, the program would be up and running as of tomorrow to help businesses as soon as possible when they get their information in. I would make the second and give Leah and Brian the the way to make those decisions on the application.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Mr. Heck, would you like to call the call the roll?
There's no other discussion. I will certainly do so. Councilmember Kubis? Trying to unmute him. He's not unmuting. He must have muted himself. So we'll we'll skip Butch until he unmutes and then we'll, no, there is Butch. Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell?
Yes.
Councilmember Lambrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Isner?
Yes.
And I will let council know that Leah has been working very diligently on, as I said, on this. And she does have a web application that we reviewed this afternoon. And if I'm not mistaken, and Leah can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, we should be able to roll this out tomorrow morning.
Yep, it can be, I just have to click the publish piece. And then what Brian has displayed is a paper application for those that maybe don't want to submit it online. There will be a two-step in the sense of the online piece that we're gonna follow up with them via email to collect the W nine piece and the lease or mortgage information through a secure email. So thank you all for taking the time to review this one.
You're welcome. Thank you. We'll move along to five point seven review and approved two thousand twenty resident survey.
All right, so this was gonna be discussed at the the March meeting, but we wanted to move that one along a little quicker. So we pulled some of these these longer items off. But staff is of the opinion that But staff is of the opinion that we still need to move forward on our resident survey that we do every couple of years to gauge residents' feelings for how the city is doing its service. I've got it up on the, the screen now. It hasn't changed much from the last couple of times, the first one we did, I believe was 2016, then we did one in 2018 and we'll do one now. We'd like to get it out so we can get the results in, so council can take a look at, at it from a standpoint of direction and priorities and strategic planning and whatnot. So we have our basic first phase, basically asks how people feel about the city of Montgomery, sense of community, look and feel and whatnot of the city and how you like living here. We have a question on the water. And then number four, basically we're asking them to rate the quality of the service that they receive and we've got many of our services listed for them to rate as we go through. We actually, whilst, like I said, we include the public schools and the, the private schools as well. We have questions about the safety of the community, how do they, how do they feel? Do they feel safe in the community? They feel safe in their neighborhoods? Are they concerned about crime and other factors that affect quality of life? Again, we're asking about housing options and we're also asking about sort of blight issues as well. We are asking about our customer service, if, if they've talked with staff or come in, how do we treat them? Are we responsive to their concerns? Do we give them good information? What is new? I'm trying to see what we did new here. Asked about recycling, we ask about activities. On the activities, we've added the maypole, the goblin walk, Easter egg, music in the park and the car roll to get an idea. Those are some new things that have been added over the last few years, see if people attend those events. Twenty-one, we revamped a wee bit, we took out a couple of things and, and added some things. I think one of the things we took out was street reconstruction because the council, using the survey, previous surveys have put together a street improvement program. So that is a priority, that's going to continue to, to move forward as we go along here. Ask about their, you know, how they feel about local government, what, how they, what do they know, how they get their information, preferred method of getting information than just demographic information. So it really hasn't changed a whole lot, the idea is to be able to keep it as consistent as possible so we can compare results year to year and see if we are improving or if we are sliding and that, we did improve from 2016 to 2018 and I'm hoping that we will see a similar improvement in, from 2018 to 2020, so. Questions that anybody has on, on the survey? And we, we send it out to a publisher, I believe Sewell Printing does it, if I'm not mistaken, and then they also mail it out to all city addresses within the city and then they turn them in here and then we compile the information using Survey Monkey and we put it out on the internet for people to, if they want to do it electronically.
Yeah, I think the content, Brian, looks good, there's just a few formatting issues, for example, items number six, eleven thirteen dented farther than the items surrounding them, that happens frequently throughout the entire document.
Okay.
That would need to be fixed if it could be pleased, otherwise I think the content is good.
Mr. Kubis, any comments? Okay, Mr. Forcell?
Not at this time, looks good, looks pretty good to me.
Mr. McGuire?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, I'm good as well, I think it looks great. I'm sure by the time, after you get done through all of that and it'll look, it'll look great. I entertain a motion to approve the 2020 resident survey.
So moved.
Mr. Kubis is first, we have a second. Mr. Lambrecht is the second. Brian, would you like to call a roll?
Certainly will. Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Forcell.
Yes.
Councilmember Kubis.
Yes.
Councilmember Lambrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Iser, oh, he's doing it again.
Yes.
I wasn't even around when he was the mayor, what's going on?
I don't know.
Oh, that's, that's great. Number six, staff and council reports, Brian, you want to start with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll keep it brief, you, you got a couple of board minutes, we didn't have some, some board meetings in, in March, so obviously you don't have those. I did find out over the weekend that the governor did sign the bill that would allow for on-sale licensed establishments, restaurants to sell beer and wine with their takeouts, the caveats being seventy-two ounces of beers, hard cider or hard seltzer, or what, basically one bottle of wine in its original packaging and, and all that kind of stuff. I think the only establishment that does not have an off-sale license is a part of their on-sale is Pizzeria, so they'd be able to sell wine and beer to their take-home customers. I did also find out that apparently, and I, funny, I got it from the Small Cities Group, the League of Minnesota Cities is not going to be having their annual conference in June. I haven't gotten an official note from LMC, but it came from the Small Cities that basically said, no, no June conference, no annual conference for League of Minnesota Cities. The Park Commission talked about music in the park this afternoon, I think, and what Dennis had said is that the performers, we probably have a little bit more time before we have to make a formal decision on that. The discouraging piece is that the governor during his update today, somebody asked a question about athletics and if they are going to be sort of allowed to continue, baseball, soccer, softball, et cetera, the team sport type of thing. He didn't seem too encouraging on that taking place anytime soon. Baseball, softball, you may not be next to each other, but you're sharing a ball, you're, you're crowded in a dugout, if there were those events, you're probably not going to have a spectator. Other sports, you're banging into each other, things like that, so. I, we're gonna have to wait a while on that, but I, I would anticipate that large gatherings are going to be restricted even through the, through the summer and into the fall. The dates that we are looking at for the spring cleanup is August fifteenth, so we'll be bringing that to the Public Works Advisory Board. We don't know if that's going to be, be feasible in August, but we figured we'd throw it out there as a, as a possible date for, for the fall cleanup, I guess we'll call it, or midsummer cleanup or something, I don't know. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at on that perspective. Center Point is in town, they're repairing the sidewalks that were tore up for the sidewalks during that replacement of their service lines and the 2020 seal coating project, the company that's going to do the crack filling in the North Ridge area, they're going to be out on Friday, starting on Friday, doing that crack filling. And then I'm guessing as the weather warms up mid-May, we'll probably see them coming in to do the seal coating. I have not heard from Mr. Cavett when the Mill and Overlay project is going to be started, so. Any questions on that, I can try and answer for you, otherwise that's all I got.
I guess the only question I have is on the citywide cleanup, um, yeah, I mean, for me, for instance, I got a few things that needed to go there, um, are there going to be possibly blight issues with that? Because I got some scrap metal, stuff like that, yada, 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 you know, what about other people also? So are we going to lax on our blight or since it won't be till August?
I don't think we're going to be lax on, if we get a complaint, and, and I see Nate's back on here, my guess is if we get a complaint, law enforcement is going to follow up. There are alternatives to citywide cleanup as, as ways to dispose of your material. You know, if you have scrap metal, you can call it off yourself, if you've got other materials, you can get dumpsters and, and whatnot. It might be a little bit more expensive than the citywide cleanup, but I don't think we're going to be any less lax if we get complaints on blight. Nate, you want to address that?
Yeah, I believe we'll, the PD will follow up on blight as normal. I think the citizens did a good job last year with, once we got a little enforcement going on getting stuff cleaned in yards and behind garages and I believe the city's starting to look a lot better, so. I believe the PD and the city admin will continue to process blight as, as normal.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any, any council reports this evening?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Okay, I'll just do a quick mayor's report, the one is just going to be a question and it's going to be to Patty, so we have some resolutions and obviously checks that need to be signed, are we going to kind of do things the way we've done it in the past? Just let me know and I'll come in and, or do you want to, would you prefer me not coming in and just stamping things? I mean, that's kind of, I want to leave that kind of up to you, I want you to feel comfortable in the office. You're muted.
And I can't, I lost control of her mute.
There we go.
There we go, there we go. I think you should come in and when Christina gets the checks run and we'll get the resolutions ready for you and you can sign them all at once and we, we don't really have a problem with you coming into the office, we do have enough room in the office where we can maintain that six-foot social distance, so I don't anticipate a problem with, at all with that.
We'll just put a big sneeze guard around the whole desk.
Do you have any issues with that, Brian?
I, I do not, like I said, there's plenty of space here, you can do it at the desk, you can do it in the conference room, you can do it in the council chambers.
Yeah.
Plenty of space here that we can be distanced.
Right.
Okay, good. And then the, the last thing I want to do, I just wanted to take the time to thank council and the residents for adjusting to the changes that have come along with the stay-at-home executive orders. I mean, this is something new for everybody, I mean, we'll, we'll forever go down as the council had to live the, the holy heck in 2020, but we're all getting anxious to get back out to some normalcy, but I just want to thank everybody to, that, thank them for waiting this out. I mean, it is important, we're trying to stay in line with the governor's orders and, and Brian and I had some conversations this afternoon with some other, with the baseballs, basically, base mallards wanting to get out and using the field and it's difficult telling people, not at this time, but I think in the end, after we had those email exchanges, everybody was under the agreement and all felt the same way that we're just, we're just trying to make things work right now. So I'm, I want to thank you guys, the council, as, and staff, and again, even all of the residents for, for adjusting. And that's all that I have, so I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Lambrecht.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Kubis.
Yep.
Councilmember Forcell.
Yep.
Mayor Iser.
Yes, motion carries, council is in adjournment at nine oh seven, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.